I would like to call to order the June 24th meeting of the Newport Beach City Council. And may we have a roll call for the study session?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present. Councilmember Hen is here.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Hen is here.
He is here, I think he's around the corner.
Thank you. Then we will move into current business. Ask for clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilwoman Gardner.
Item number eight, the hearing officer. From the thing, it looks like he's from Pebble Beach. Is that correct? I mean, we can't find anybody closer if that is the case?
We do an RFP, and we have found people closer. This is a person who probably does travel up and down the state doing this.
Do we pay for his travel expenses?
No.
Oh.
I'll double check with Dan on that before you adopt it tonight, but that's not my understanding.
Okay.
Yeah. We do look for local people and do a local RFP.
Well, I was just concerned if we had to pay extra travel expenses.
Okay. Councilman Petros.
I have none, thank you.
Councilman Selig.
I have none.
Councilwoman Daigle.
I have none.
Thank you. Councilmember Hen states he has none. Councilmember Curry.
I have none.
And I have none. With that, we'll move on to agenda study session item number two, water taxi service.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Commissioner Doug West will be giving a presentation this afternoon on our findings for the water taxi proposal. And with that, I'll turn it over to Doug.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hill, members of the council. Happy to be here this afternoon to have this opportunity to report on the work of the Harbor Commission's Water Taxi Subcommittee. In, I believe it was March, our mayor, Mayor Hill, came to the Harbor Commission meeting and charged us with a task of assessing the feasibility of a public water taxi system in Newport Harbor on a pilot basis. A subcommittee, an ad hoc committee, was formed consisting of myself, Commissioners Dave Gerling, and Commissioners Joe Stapleton, whom I believe are also here today. And I'll ask for their comments after I've had a chance to overview this summary of our work. We conducted a series of four public meetings from March 25th to June 11th. Those were attended by about 25 Newport Beach residents and harbor business representatives. A number of the people among those 25 attended multiple sessions and had a good opportunity to give us their views and some information about the prospects of a water taxi system in the harbor. We received additional public comments at our April, May, and June Harbor Commission meetings, so I do believe that the public has had a good opportunity to weigh in on this. In addition to those meetings, the commissioners and staff met individually with representatives from Duffy Boats, Lear Boats, Willard Marine, Hornblower Cruises and Events, the LA County Beaches and Harbor Department, Fort Lauderdale Water Taxi Company, Uber, and with Ralph Rodheim. Ralph Rodheim, a former member of the commission, was particularly important in our discussions because it was Ralph who, among others, who once attempted an entrepreneurial effort to establish a water taxi in the harbor and knows something about why that one didn't work. Gary Sherwin of Newport Beach and Company attended two public meetings, and we welcomed his input. We began with a thorough review of the 2009 report of the Newport Beach Water Taxi Exploratory Committee with much commentary about that from John Coro, who was the principal author of that report and a member of that committee at that time. Our principal conclusions are that there is, in fact, significant interest in a waterborne transportation system in Newport Harbor among the people with whom we spoke. I have to tell you that the committee really has no means for estimating the actual demand or ridership for such a system as simply beyond our ability to do that. We do know, for certain, based on everything that I've just described that we did, that the seasonal demand for this will vary significantly. We doubt that if implemented, such a system would be a year-round operation. The size of Newport Harbor and the five mile an hour speed limit make an on-demand service model very challenging and, in our opinion, not practical, at least in the early phases of any pilot effort. We think that a scheduled loop route operation or a water bus is probably the most feasible operations model, at least in the early stages. We think that perhaps flag stops along an established loop route could enhance the service level and something that might be considered. We also had a lot of discussion during our meetings about a possible, what I would call, hybrid operating model with on-demand service that might evolve beyond the pilot phase, after the pilot phase, using smaller boats and Uber-like technology to enable some on-demand service. We think that that's something that ought to be kept in mind. We don't think that that's something that would be practical in the first phase of any pilot.
Doug, what's a flag stop?
A flag stop is like on the Alaska ferry where if you are on the route but are at something other than one of the scheduled stops, you may put a flag up, hail the boat, they'll stop for you. Or if you're on the boat and you say, gee, I'd like to get off at the next dock, they'll do that. And we see that on a number of land-based bus services, too, that it might work. So here is a conceptual idea of what a water bus route might look like in a pilot phase. This is all very conceptual, but it's a considered concept. And first of all, notice that the concept establishes a route that would run from, at the most eastern point, Coral Avenue on Balboa Island, over to the Rhine Channel, and then up and along Mariners Mile, up to Bayside Drive, and then back to Coral Avenue. It's a concept. Also shown on this slide are the number of members of the Newport Beach Restaurant Association who have establishments in those various areas. We note that on the slide because we think that people going to restaurants might be an important part of the eventual ridership. And also because we have appreciated the input from Gary Sherwin and his people, who also believe that. We think that in a pilot phase, at least four boats would be necessary to achieve an adequate service level on the loop that we've just shown in concept. That would consist of two pairs of boats traveling in opposite directions. The approximate time around that loop at harbor speed is about 90 minutes with those stops. And that would create about a 45-minute service interval at each stop along the way in each direction. So if a boat just left your dock in that direction, it would be 45 minutes until the next boat going in that direction would arrive. These are, of course, approximations, but we've actually run the loop, and it's about 90 minutes. The Coast Guard and ADA regulatory costs would be significant even at a pilot stage. Of course, any passenger vessels must be Coast Guard certified, and the staffing of the captain must be Coast Guard certified. ADA compliance, at least at some of the docks and all of the vessels, would be a requirement. Rough cost estimations for the vessels, we believe, is in the range of about $150,000 per vessel. That's for what we're calling a Marina Del Rey-style boat, which I'll show you in a moment.
How many passengers?
I believe 25 to 30, plus capacity for baby strollers and bicycles, which we're told by several people is really necessary in an operation like this. People come with that equipment. The staffing costs are about $35 for a suitable captain and probably something in the range of $20 to $25 for a deckhand, which would be required either on each boat or each dock to assist passengers coming aboard and leaving the boat. We, as shown in that concept loop, believe that the existing public docks could be utilized to a great extent as part of this in a pilot phase, but there will be some capital cost for dock reconfiguration to achieve ADA compliance. And then other costs, of course, will be to create necessary signage and marketing and other surrounding costs necessary to create public awareness and use of the system. We're virtually certain that water bus service could not break even on its fares. But other sources of revenue might include advertising aboard the vessels. It might include contributions from harbor area businesses that benefit from the passenger traffic that it would generate. And we believe that federal, county, state, and federal subsidies might also be employed. We know that, and I keep mentioning Marina Del Rey, and I'll get to that, I promise, we know that they recently received a federal subsidy, and their operation is heavily subsidized by the County of Los Angeles. We took a look at the Fort Lauderdale water taxi because it is iconic, and many of us have ridden it at one time or another over the years, and it came up in our discussions or in our public meetings. It's a significant taxi system operated by a private company without a subsidy. In addition to being a transportation system, it's also a sightseeing and tour operation. Their boats accommodate between 26 and 60 passengers. They sell a $22 day pass, and they have a three-hour loop route operating from 10:00 AM to midnight. They have 12 boats in operation during their peak season and six boats during their off-season, but it is a year-round operation.
Doug, are there other tour companies in Fort Lauderdale? I mean, one of the concerns that's been expressed, I know, is, you know, why, how does this compete with the rental boats and the tour boats that we already have?
I believe--
Like we just say, no, you may not say anything while you're talking.
I believe that there are other tour operators in Fort Lauderdale. As I mentioned, this one is not subsidized. The concern that was raised during several of our meetings was that people were wondering how it would be that the city or the state or anyone might subsidize an operation that would be in competition with existing service. So, on the Fort Lauderdale situation, that was useful information, but in our opinion, that operation is at a scale with the boats and with the service level that they provide that is beyond what we imagine might be feasible, at least in a pilot phase. Maybe that's something to aspire to, but we don't think that that is one on which to model in the first instance. We spent a good bit of time looking at the Marina Del Rey water bus, which has actually been in some form of operation since 2002, when it was first established to bridge a bicycle route through Marina Del Rey Harbor. And we think in some respects that that Marina Del Rey bus system provides an operating model around which a similar Newport Beach system might be developed. It's a seasonal operation at four days a week, plus special events and holidays. And it is, in their estimation, now successful after a number of years of testing it and tweaking it and making it work better. The Marina Del Rey water bus is shown here. That is one of, I believe they have, escaping me, they have four or six boats of this type. It's not the most elegant boat that I've ever seen, but it's very functional for the purpose in which they're using it. It's a pontoon boat. It is Coast Guard certified. It does load from their existing docks, both from the front and on the side. It accommodates bikes and strollers, and it's ADA compatible.
Doug, could I ask you a question about this operation? The county is in the process of redeveloping Marina Del Rey. Do you know if this water taxi is still incorporated in those redevelopment plans?
To my knowledge, it is.
Okay, good, thank you.
And what's the loop time, the wait between rides, do you think?
You can see that loop map there. And Councilwoman Gardner, I'm sorry, I don't know what the total loop time is. I will say, in that regard, that after some experimentation with the system, they have discontinued a loop fare. Their fare is a $1 one-way fare, and when you get on the boat, you must have a specific destination on that route. You may not just get on and ride around and enjoy the loop. They thought that it was being overused as just a boat ride, and they are trying to focus on actually moving people from one place to another across and through the harbor. It is operated by Hornblower Cruises and Events under contract with LA County. It's under the administration of the LA County Beaches and Harbor Department, with whom we spoke several times. It operates from late June through Labor Day. In fact, it went into operation just last weekend for this season. It operates from Thursday to Sunday and on holidays and for special events, such as the concert series that they carry out through the summer. It's a $1 one-way fare. You may buy a season pass for $30. In 2013, last year, and the year before, they exceeded 40,000 passenger volume, which is the highest to date. And it is all subsidized annually by LA County at an amount in excess of $400,000.
And does that cover all their costs, the $400,000?
My understanding of the arrangement that they have with their provider, Hornblower, is that Hornblower receives a significant part of that subsidy. Part of that money is also used for marketing and the like. And then Hornblower receives the revenue from the fare. That's their deal. So, we're showing you the Marina Del Rey water bus, as we said earlier, as a model around which we think something in Newport Beach might be developed. There are some differences between our harbor and theirs. Our harbor is larger. Their harbor has a higher residential population density. They have, therefore, I think, a more concentrated demand for the service of this in a relatively smaller area. But still, the boats that they've chosen, the operator that they've chosen, and the general structure of their route suggests things that we could perhaps learn from if a decision is made to go forward with this. If the council is interested in going forward, we believe, our committee believes, that the next steps would be to perhaps retain a transportation consultant who could develop an operations and business model for the taxi system, or I should say, the water bus system. And perhaps prepare a draft request for proposals that could help flesh out the interest level and actual costs of a supplier to operate the system. We're showing here a reference to the request for proposal that was issued by Marina Del Rey several years ago. That document runs well in excess of 100 pages. A lot of thought has gone into it that reflects their learning over the years about how such a system might be done, and I think there's something there that we could learn from. We're suggesting that the Harbor Commission is really beyond its bandwidth in terms of the expertise necessary to develop a real operations model and a business model or a draft RFP. But we're not trying to escape this. We would like to be involved. If the council decides to go forward, we would be happy to continue to be involved, both as a public forum for additional input from the public about the development of such a system and as a sounding board and offering our advice along the way. And again, we do appreciate the interest that's been shown by Gary Sherwin and his Among the lessons that we've learned, both in talking to the Fort Lauderdale people and the Marina Del Rey people, is it's all about marketing, marketing, and marketing, and getting people to, building an awareness about what it is, what it offers. And so those are our suggested next steps, should you decide to go forward.
Mr. West, I also wanted to ask you, going back to the Marina Del Rey model, would any of the Harbor Commissioners or you have any idea of the level of ownership of either Duffy or small craft in Marina Del Rey as compared to Newport Harbor?
You mean, the population of those kinds of boats?
Right.
I couldn't tell you what the numbers are. They certainly exist in significant numbers. I want to ask if Commissioner Stapleton or Mr. Gerling would like to add anything to my overview.
Mayor Hill, council. I want to start by thanking our mayor for, I now know more about water taxis than I care to admit. It's been interesting. I think--
Give us your name.
Joe Stapleton, Harbor Commission. I think on this project, we really looked at what's different between now and 2009. And one of the things I really sunk my teeth into was the technology, really understanding, would somebody really wait 15, 30, 45 minutes between water taxis or water buses? And the answer is probably no, unless they had an app on their smartphone that would tell you when the next water taxi was available, when it was coming. So I did an extensive amount of research with Uber and with Lyft, two well-known app companies and mobile taxi services here in the community and around the country and in the world, neither of which are really interested in this kind of model. They're both startup tech companies, and their real mission is to really develop a technology that keeps people in motion on an on-demand service, not a water taxi or water bus system. So what I did from there is I went to the Newport Beach and Company, elicited the help from Mark Rudick, who's their technology guy there, and said, could we design an app in-house? And he said, absolutely. So the two of us started working on some prototypes for an app that could be downloaded easily on your smartphone with a lot of the technology that's already on the Visit Newport Beach app that we have on our phones now. The whole idea is to keep the payment in-house. You have a square reader. You can easily take payments on the boats. But you can see all the water taxis, the GPS from the captain's phone, so you know exactly when the next water taxi is coming. Certainly, we discussed a lot about marketing, like my fellow commissioner talked about, really understanding the demand. I think for me, when we talk about, you know, as chairman of the Newport Chamber of Commerce here in town, my biggest thing also was a concern about competing with private industry. I see it as an opportunity to get people on the water. I think it might be intimidating for a lot of people visiting from the Midwest or from the East Coast coming out here to rent a small vessel in a harbor that are staying at Fashion Island or somewhere else, to go down and rent a vessel and figure out how to captain this around a bunch of sailboats, et cetera. So I thought this was an opportunity to get people on the water, less intimidating, and not compete directly with our other tour vessels that are out there, but an opportunity for someone to come out. I know for myself, I'm not going to grab 12 buddies and go jump on a water taxi and listen to some music and hang out. We're going to go rent a small watercraft that we can from one of the places here in Those are my ideas, I think, making, you know, as a Harbor Commissioner, my number-one goal is to make this a recreational harbor. And I think this is an area where we can really lean on as a city to provide that service, where people can get on the water and enjoy the water and go from different places. I have two letters here in my hands. I've got a letter from the Balboa Island Improvement Association, voted by their board in support of a water taxi system. And obviously, the Newport Beach Restaurant Association has also sent us a letter as commissioners and to council in support of a venture like this. I think it's obvious, if you were able to go to the harbor and go to different establishments, I think that's a win-win for our local businesses. That's all I have, unless you guys have any questions. I did spend a lot of time with Fort Lauderdale, with the general manager of their property, and it seems like a different beast. I mean, they do thousands of visitors on their water taxis on a daily basis.
Joe, there was a comment made that possibly the Restaurant Association could help support this in their letter, saying they supported a water taxi. Did they also say that they would be willing to help financially support this effort?
I have been told that, yes. Not directly from the Newport Beach Association, but through their, you know, maybe through Newport Beach and Company.
Thank you. I'm curious, Ralph Rodheim, as you mentioned, had put some input into it, especially having previously operated or tried to operate one. So what was, can you summarize Ralph's input in this?
I think he helped us understand what was recognized in the 2009 study, that it lacked sufficient scale. It was undercapitalized and lacks enough scale to really get legs. And I think that's the essence of it. And he was, of course, up against the large harbor and the speed limits as well. And with one or two boats, as he had, it wasn't adequate. When we talk about four boats, we really do believe that's the minimum that would be required for a meaningful pilot.
Do you have more presentation?
No, I think that, unless Commissioner Gerling might like to add something. Other than that, I believe we're finished. I would like to say, note of thanks to Chris Miller and Shannon Levin, both of whom were very helpful to us in the process of facilitating the public meetings and helping us pull this all together. Appreciate your help. Thank you.
I have some brief comments. Dave Gerling, Harbor Commissioner and member of the Subcommittee, Mayor Hill, and members of the city council. I refer to my notes, and it looks like Hornblower's paid about $450,000 a year to operate, or per season to operate this, just so you know. That's the number that was given to us. Also, another aspect that should be taken into consideration is the reduction in traffic and congestion that might be achieved through a water taxi. That was brought up. We have no way to quantify that, but it is an issue that probably needs to be reviewed in any study that you do going forward, because it has been suggested. And also, if you do decide to move forward with this, one of the big, of the public docks, five of them are on Balboa Island, and they will need a significant retrofitting because of the seawall in order to get ADA compliant. So you might, if you do decide to move forward that, you might want to incorporate that into any seawall revisions that you do, because it would be necessary in order to use those public docks. Thank you.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
At this juncture, I'd like to just take a big step backwards and acknowledge the fact that in the last couple of months, we've heard from the Harbor Commission on issues related to the public docks. related to the public docks, the lower castaways, this item, very, very thoughtful and well-analyzed bits of information that have really informed, at least my consideration, of all of these issues. To every member of this commission, I want to say thank you. You have done yeoman's work here, very, very good thoughtful work on this matter and all the others that have come before us in the last couple of months.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Gardner?
A couple of things. I think frequency is really important in terms of any kind of bus service. I know, if I go down, if I'm going to downtown LA, I'll take the blue line, because I know it comes every 15 minutes. So if I miss one, I don't have an hour wait. I think that one thing that hasn't been talked about is parking around the piers or where they would stop. When I hear about, two things though, in particular, traffic reduction and subsidies, then if we were at all interested in going forward, I would think that one of the things we would want to do is analyze not just a water taxi, but some kind of tram, and have a comparison between the amount of traffic they would take out, the amount of business they might bring, because there are differences. But to be sure, that we are, if we are going to subsidize something, and we seem to be getting into that business more and more, for some reason, that we are subsidizing the right thing, and the thing that would make the most impact for the city, not just in terms of traffic, of course, but in terms of the economy and everything else. So that would be something I would want us to consider.
Thank you. Councilman Curry?
First of all, I'd like to thank the Harbor Commission for what I think was a very in-depth and comprehensive and dispassionate look at this issue. It brought out a lot of very good facts and a lot of good information that I think is helpful in contemplating this decision. And Mayor Hill, I want to thank you for bringing this issue to the council and for putting it on the table, because this is one of the ways that we look at ways to make the city better and to provide a greater level of services. But the report was illuminating in a lot of ways. I was in Fort Lauderdale in January and had a hotel room that overlooked one of the stops for the water taxi, went down and looked at it, and at $22 a person with a 30-minute headway, it would have been cheaper for us to rent a car for the entire day than to try and figure out that system. And people make those kinds of choices when they're traveling and when they're looking at options. What I found was illuminating was that in the Marina Del Rey, they get a public subsidy of $400,000 and carried 43,000 passengers. That's a subsidy per passenger of $9.30, or roughly $10 when you figure it out, which means that for every dollar that a passenger put in the fare box, the taxpayers put a 10-spot in right behind him. And that's the level of subsidy that we're really talking about. In fact, it's probably going to be more than that. I used to commute from Marin County to San Francisco on the Golden Gate Fury, the absolutely most spectacular commute in America, on one of the finest vessels ever done, and I think it was about $60 per passenger subsidy that was paid for that. And when I was with the Federal Transit Administration, we looked at waterborne transportation across the country, and it invariably is the most highly subsidized form of transportation that exists. And the Commission did a very good job in identifying some of the reasons for that, Coast Guard compliance, maritime union activity, the way you have to reconfigure the vessels, all of those issues, the docks would be a major expense, all of those are things that we need to think about and consider. Now, in Los Angeles, they do it because the local, the measure money that the local sales tax provides for a component to each city for transit, and so that's sort of money that comes to them that they can use for this. And we probably have some from Measure M that we could use too, but we could use it for other things. We do our traffic signal synchronization with Measure M money, a lot of our roadwork. We subsidize, I presume, some of our senior citizens' meals on wheels. So we need to be very thoughtful about if we're going to use that kind of a resource, what are the other calls for the money, and I think Councilmember Gardner identified this, where it can be used, and make an appropriate policy choice about that. I, more than anybody else, think a water taxi is a wonderful thing to have and a great way to augment the community and to provide a great amenity for tourists. But I, more than anybody else, I think, have an understanding, having worked in the industry, about the economics of that, and the economics of that are very, very challenging in terms of the subsidy required to make this a successful service.
Councilman Hen?
Well, I guess the question before us is, do we want to take the next step? Which I presume would mean having a consultant come in and really give us a better factual view of the capital costs, as well as the operating costs and subsidies. And it seems to me that this is a strong enough potential amenity in the harbor and for visitation in the city and to the businesses surrounding the harbor, that it would be worth taking another step. I'd be curious to know if staff has thought about that and what the cost of, you know, a well-studied report might be. Does anybody have an idea about that? I guess for myself, I'd at least like to understand what the cost of studying this more carefully would be. So at least, you know, we've got a solid set of facts here for comparison to other alternatives, as well as for this alternative.
You're not, I'm not quite sure what you're suggesting. You're saying that we should go forward with a study, or you'd like to know how much a study would cost?
I think we should go forward with a study. I mean, if it's, the study's going to cost a million dollars, I might rethink that. But, you know, if a study is going to be in the range of $100,000, I would—
But if the council as a whole doesn't want to subsidize this sort of thing, does it make sense to spend $100,000 on a study?
Well, I don't know the council as a whole—
Oh, I don't either. But I mean, maybe that's a decision that we need, we should be making. Are we comfortable with this next step? I'm not. I'm not comfortable subsidizing the water taxi at this point.
Let me offer maybe some suggestions. This is a study session, so it's a chance for you to say, what more would you like to know before you were asked to make a decision? We could certainly gather that information and put an actual decision item or a directional item on your nighttime session coming up.
For me, it would be a comparison. Are we getting, you know, what would we get if we took the same amount of money and subsidized a tram service along the peninsula and perhaps Mariners Mile or something like that?
Now, let me jump in on that, if I can. What I'd be interested in is just seeing what the startup cost would be. I'm just, just from what I've heard, I'm guessing it's probably at least $2 million to start it up between the dock modifications and the cost of the boats, and then maybe try and get a handle on what the annual patronage would be on it. You know, we've heard $400,000 or so a year is required to subsidize an operation of this sort. I don't know whether that would fit into a model that's expanded from Marina Del Rey to a larger harbor like Newport, but I think it would be important to get more of an idea of what kind of cost would be talked about, not only in the subsidy, but in the startup costs, so we could compare it to some of the other things we're looking at doing and see where it might lie or not lie in the priorities.
I agree with that approach.
So I think you're saying, let's have a consultant do some work?
I don't know about that. I think the staff could probably put that together.
Let me chime in here, since I'm a little familiar with the topic. Number one, I too would like to thank the Harbor Commission. I have been tremendously impressed with the output from the Harbor Commission. It's almost as if everyone there had a full-time job in that seat. And so I think you're to be congratulated on the work that you do and the advice that you are providing. As I travel around the city and speak, I thought the Newport dividend would be something that would be of high interest, and it seems to be of interest at the counter, and a lot of that is going on. But what everybody wants to talk about is a water taxi. And I think that a water taxi is an extension of what Newport is all about, and that's the harbor. When I compare a tram that you can have in Salt Lake City, that Newport Beach is one of the very few places in Orange County, if not the only place in Orange County, I guess there's Dana Point, but that really could deal with a water taxi environment. And I think that when I see Balboa Island Improvement Association come out voluntarily and support this and the dock tax, the dock tax, that was before it didn't slip, the floating docks concept, when I see the Restaurant Association, there's an ingredient here that wasn't here before, when this was tried before. And that was the, that is, the marketing capabilities of Newport Beach and Company. And the interests that they see that the hotels have, the interest the Restaurant Association see that local residents have. And as we travel around and speak in this town, the interest local residents have to be able to enjoy the harbor, to enjoy the restaurants and hospitality operations around the harbor without having to be in their cars and drive. And I think that as we look at all of these activities that we're trying to enhance Balboa Village, as we look at Balboa Island, you know, Mariners Mile, Lido, we're trying to improve all of these areas, and they can all be accessed without increasing traffic. And a problem I have with a tram is on the weekends on the peninsula, a tram can't get anyplace any faster than anybody else can, you know, unless we create a road pattern that is a separate access for high occupancy, high occupancy vehicles. I think that the pie gets bigger. When more people are exposed to the harbor, the activities that are on the harbor have the benefit of a larger market. I do not see a water taxi as being in competition with tour boats. I would in fact say that a water taxi, in our instance, might be prohibited from offering tours and that type of thing while they're in the taxi mode. I would think that visitors would come and take a water taxi and get excited about going out on the harbor. And as was said, you're not going to take a group of friends and have shrimp and dip and a bottle of wine on a water taxi. But you certainly can do that if you see what the environment is, and how enjoyable it is, and how peaceful it is, and want to rent a boat and do that. So I think the pie gets bigger when more people are exposed. And so once again, yes, I think it's going to be great for visitors, but I think the locals, and once again, we hear that as we travel around, I don't think we need to overanalyze this thing. I think we need to try a pilot. And I think the problem that happened in the past was that it wasn't a big enough scale. I mean, I think that was an excellent summary of Ralph Rothheim's, Ralph Rothheim's attempt. I think that the key that you made of frequency is absolutely key. Regularity and frequency is something that I have to know when it will be there and be able to count on that. And so I think that is something that's important to deal with. I think that there are vendors out there that are willing to come in and give this a try. I mean, I am supportive of moving forward to the next step, of looking at what some of the startup costs would be, looking at what kind of a RFP could be put together by allowing those potential vendors to come and talk to us and say, what would they do? And from that, be able to formulate an RFP. I do think this is something that staff could take the next step on and get to a point where they could at least come back in and say, we've talked to a half a dozen potential vendors, we feel that this is the kind of thing that they would be interested in, we think this is the cost and time and staff that would take to move in that direction, are you interested in going in that direction? I think that it deserves, from the interest and the excitement out there about it, to go to the next step of fact-finding.
You've certainly heard different. I haven't heard a great deal of excitement, but I mean, if that's what the council wants to go forward, I would just say that it's one thing to say, oh yeah, a water taxi sounds great. It's something else when you start to say, well, it's going to cost the city several million dollars just to get it up and running as a pilot. That is, maybe would diminish some of the excitement about it. So I think that that sort of thing is maybe, would not be quite so welcome. But I do think, if we are going to do something, we do need to know the cost, and there has to be some information at some point about parking, because we have, the Balboa Island public piers are certainly not going to be able to handle 20 or 30 extra cars as taxi stops or bus stops for the water taxi.
Just a comment on the public piers. The Harbor Commission, totally independent of any thought of water taxi, has made the recommendation that we need additional public piers in our harbor. And so I look at that as a separate item that has a synergy to this, and I think we should be moving ahead on both of them. And if the water taxi never went, we still need to spend the money in investing in our public piers. And so I don't see that as a direct cost of water taxi, I see that as an independent item that needs to be done simultaneously with respect to this.
Mayor Hill?
Any council comments, and we'll open it up to the public?
As far as the Newport dividend goes, you know, what many cities are doing, and they're in this out at a conference at SCAG, is they are giving fee waivers for solar, and that's because people aren't necessarily inclined to do that unless there's some sort of an incentive. So you're also moving forward a social goal. But it seems to me, the Newport dividend, it is costing, we're losing about $2 million in revenues. And so, you know, you might even get seven votes to modify the Newport dividend so that it applies to solar, and you have a waiver, a fee waiver for solar, and then some of those fee, those lost fees, which are, from what I've heard, going to remodel kitchens, so there's no real neighborhood revitalization happening, that maybe that could be modified and those, that those savings could be directed to a pilot, just a suggestion as far as, because you indicated that's really where the public's interests lie. So just a suggestion there. But I think we do need more information on the costs and the startup costs, you know, before there's any commitment. And as far as hiring a consultant, I mean, I think Councilman, Councilman Gardner says it right, it's like, if this is going to be a million dollars, why hire the consultant? You know, then there's just going to be, I think, a test of the council of who really wants to commit that amount of money to do this program.
And I've heard the range by some people that seem to have a lot of experience in this, and saying that the other end of the equation is, given the proper operations and compatibility, $300,000 would start a pilot program on this.
Well, I think our staff—
Why, we need more information on it.
Right, and our staff, lots of computers and telephones, they know harbors up and down the coast, and I'm sure they can get further information for us.
All right. Dave, do you really feel like staff has the capacity and capability, for example, to analyze the potential demand for this, which is a big component of the issue, as well as the capital costs and so forth?
My sense is we could do a light brush on it, but not a very meaningful analysis that you might want to make a decision based upon. So, and I don't know that, if I could find the right person, and if it was, you know, 20, 30 hours of work, it's not a big deal contract, it could be fairly short-term, but let us go and talk about that and figure something out. But that's my read off the top of my head. It might well be that person is in Newport Beach and Company. All right, I'd like to open this up to public. Anybody in the public like to make comment on this item?
Hello, everybody. My name is Shanda from Lear Electric Boats, and I want to also commend the ad hoc committee on their report. I thought that was great. I just wanted to add the comment that when we're talking about a water taxi, they made a wonderful statement that we really should call it a water bus, and I think that's more appropriate. The need for point-to-point service, I feel, could be supported by the city. If current rental fleets had U.S. Coast Guard certified boats that could be in their rental fleet, making money as rental fleet boats, and when the need arose, have one of the dockhands who might have a six-pack license, who had to go pick up someone at the dunes, just a carload of people, that would be four or five people, that a six-pack driver can handle that. And that would maybe not make money for the rental fleet, but would solve the point-to-point problem of a water taxi, and would allow people to park at parking structures and parking lots, and reduce the parking problem that is being experienced on the peninsula. And I don't, I didn't understand what you said about solar. Solar, as far as—
It relates to something else. You don't need to understand it.
Okay, all right. All right. So that's it. Just two points, water bus, water taxi. I think the, the, every, the city could, for instance, put on the potential U.S. Coast Guard smaller boats, like a tax medallion, like they do in New York City, to designate that these boats do have the permit to pull up to the public docks, and therefore, people who live on Balboa Peninsula, Balboa Island— And therefore, people who live on Balboa Peninsula, Balboa Island, they could wave, or with Uber or the city planned app, say, okay, I need a water taxi to take me to the Fun Zone, or I need a water taxi to take me to the Bay Club, et cetera. And so that would be a solution that would be half-supported by the city with these tax medallions, allowing these boats to access the public docks and run by private companies. So the solution would be solved at least almost immediately for the point-to-point service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right.
Anybody else like to speak on this topic?
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. In listening, this may or may not turn out to be a relevant point, but in listening to the discussion, one further issue occurred to me that whoever is investigating this may wish to investigate. And that is, as all of you know very well, from the Fire Rings experience, when the city offers a low-cost visitor-serving amenity, it can be very difficult for the city to stop offering that low-cost visitor-serving amenity. And with that in mind, I think the council wants to be very cautious about what amenities it offers, particularly if it's going to be one that has to be heavily subsidized by the taxpayers and is going to benefit, at the moment, we know only it's going to benefit a handful of restaurant owners who we are already supporting in other ways. So, again, I don't know that that's an issue here, but I think it's something that should be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public like to speak on this issue? If not, I guess I would like to make one more reaction to Councilwoman Daigle's comments. If solar was not included in the waiver of fee for residential renovation, I certainly think it should be because it's part of renovating the home. So I'd be surprised if it wasn't included. And there is a significant difference in that that is a basis for assistance in employment. It increases sales tax within the market for all of the items that are purchased for home remodeling. It increases the property value and all of that eventually comes back to the city. So it's really not an expense, but it's an investment that boosts employment at this point in time as well. So I think that that is a different concept and a different model than what we're talking about with respect to water taxi. Further comments? All right. Then we'll move on on the agenda to the third item, community update on Fourth of July.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hill and council members and staff. David McGill from your police department. I just have a couple of quick comments and I'm going to turn it over to my Lieutenant Evan Saylor to give a presentation on our Fourth of July activities. The first thing I want to say is, as I stand here today on behalf of Chief Johnson, your police department is ready for another outstanding Fourth of July. Although it is on a Friday, it does not bother us. We're ready no matter what. And we've got deployment resources that Evan's going to talk about on the third and also on the fifth. So we are ready to go on that. We have had a lot of training and a couple of other things that we've changed over this year as opposed to last year that Evan will get into. And a quick note about, you know, this presentation will talk about mainly the West Newport area and rightfully so. That's the bulk of our activity. As some may know, I'll be the incident commander again this year for that side of town. However, we do have the rest of the city covered, as we always do. In fact, more deployed than we normally do. And that's by Captain Johnson. He's in charge of the entire city of all the radio calls. So just, so there's no misunderstanding that all of our resources are not solely in West Newport. It's citywide. Captain Johnson has that responsibility. I have, as incident commander, the Fourth of July activities predominantly on the west side of town. And with that, Evan Saylor is my operations chief and he has a responsibility to make sure that this event goes off smoothly, which I know he will. We're aiming for the time where some of us in police department will have a day off on Fourth of July. Evan's going to be so fortunate next year to have a day off because he's actually going to retire. So that's the only way we can get a day off now, but we're working toward that. Evan Saylor.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hill, City Council, city staff. Wanted to thank you for allowing us this opportunity to present our strategy for this year's Fourth of July. Obviously, it's in line and accordance with your and the city's vision for the family-friendly Fourth of July. Biggest impact that we have, as Deputy Chief was saying, is our ability to provide the proper level of police services on this day. Obviously, due to the large crowds and a large amount of alcohol consumption, mainly down on the Balboa Peninsula, specifically that Safety Enhancement Zone, it does impact our ability to provide those services, hence the reason to come up with such an elaborate strategy. Just to recap, last year, last year we issued 477 total citations. That would include administrative citations, criminal citations. You're talking mainly the overall majority of them, but for open containers of alcohol drinking in public. We issued 311 parking citations. That is us, the police department. I know the private parking issued in the low 200 number range. And we arrested a total of 124 people last year. In 2011 and 2012, that's a mistake there, actually, both years we arrested 119, 2011 and 2012. And last year, we spent approximately $175,000 for our efforts. And that was actually a decrease in spending for us. This is year five of our multi-year plan to identify party houses and the trouble spots to educate, inform, and hopefully prevent some of these problems from occurring. Our goal again this year has been to get out early and educate everybody and try to prevent these problems prior to the Fourth of July, as well as the morning and day of the Fourth of July. And our goal leading up to last year was to open up all the streets. And if you recall, last year, we ended up opening up the final part with Seashore Drive. We removed the barricades on Seashore Drive. I'll talk a little bit more about that. This is our fourth year of the Lugo ordinance, the Loud and Unruly Gathering Ordinance. Now, again, that really has given us some good leverage to help us lower the number of parties out there. In 2011, the first year of the Lugo, we issued 16 citations on July 4th for Lugo. Last year, or I'm sorry, in 2012, we issued four, and last year, we only issued one citation for Lugo. Again, the goal to move us towards that family-friendly event. And as the deputy chief said, we'll be operating under the incident command system, which means Deputy Chief McGill will be the incident commander for the Safety Enhancement Zone activities. I'll be the operations chief. The rest of the city will be managed by Captain Johnson during the day. Our philosophy this year is to be mobile, flexible, and adaptable to whatever these problems are that are occurring. When you see the zero tolerance there, what we've really done for the past few months leading up to this July 4th is take the time to sit our personnel down and really educate them on the importance of getting out there and enforcing these laws and treating July 4th just like we treat the rest of the year, rather than letting things go and turning the other cheek. And as the deputy chief said, our goal for us on our side of it is to, hopefully one day, some of our senior officers will be able to sit at home and barbecue with their families on the Fourth of July rather than having to come to work. This is probably one of the only ways to do it. The other thing over the years, we have had some issues with some of the outside agencies that come to assist us. To them, it's a moneymaker and a date to enjoy themselves as well. And what we've done this year is we've spent a couple of months educating them and their supervisors, no, it's not. They're to participate with us as well. Our goal is to have them work and enforce the laws in line with what we're doing out there and try to get them to work just as hard as we're working. So we have spent the past couple of months doing that as well. And then the final thing up there that we've done new for this year is we've created what we call a crowd management team. What we've taken is we've taken a team of five officers. We've sent them to some crowd management schools, helped them to get up to, trained with some subject matter experts on it. Our goal is to get them out there into some of the problem areas and move some of these crowds. An example is last year, we've had some issues, 32nd Seashore, 32nd in the boardwalk, 36th in the boardwalk where the boardwalk ends and out on the beach, some of those areas where we've kind of sat back and been a little more reactive and, you know, watched the crowds. The goal this year is this crowd's actually going to get out there, they're going to have six mounted officers assigned to them, and their goal is to get out there and just move people and keep them moving. Hopefully, we'll prevent a lot of problems from occurring this way. Safety Enhancement Zone, again, 32nd Street to 54th Street to the West Coast Highway and to Newport Boulevard to the boundaries. I'll talk about the road closures. It's tough to see on the map. The only thing that we are closing this year, once again, same as last year, if you are traveling westbound on Balboa from 32nd Street to the Coast Highway, those left turn pockets to turn onto the 100 blocks, so I think it's like 36th, 39th, 41st, 43rd, 45th, those left turn pockets will be closed. However, those 100 blocks will be open. The turnoff from the Coast Highway at Orange Street will also be closed because the traffic just gets so congested down there. We'll have that closed. Superior Hill Parking Lot will be closed and Via Aporto to the rear of the Old City Hall will be closed. That's going to be utilized for our mounted officers coming down and parking their trucks and trailers. So access to the area again to simulate crowds, normal flow of traffic, compliance with laws. It worked really well the last two years with opening up Balboa. The cars kind of self-regulated, the pedestrians and the bicyclists. However, the CHP really does enjoy themselves coming down here and enforcing the laws. They wrote a lot of tickets. They will be back again this year. That is their main responsibility, Balboa Boulevard, Newport Boulevard. Control the crowds on Seashore Drive and those 100 blocks. And as I said earlier, a big component of that is going to be this crowd management team that's going to be stationed down there for the majority of the day, trying to move those crowds and keep them from congregating. If things do get bad, we do have our emergency traffic management plan in effect. We'll be staging all our barricades. We will be able to initiate that and close down the roads, just as we've done in years past, if that need arises. We would close down those 100 blocks, close Balboa Boulevard, and we would cycle all the traffic out of Balboa, Newport Boulevard, up Superior, up Newport Boulevard, and out on the Coast Highway east and westbound.
Lieutenant Saylor, you mentioned that you're going to close Orange. How will you treat Prospect?
Prospect is actually open. In the last few years, it's actually regulated itself pretty well because most people go down maybe to Orange and they'll see the amount of traffic and they pull back out. But the problem has always been in Orange. I know a lot of the residents have complained and they, every year, they contact me to make sure that we're still closing it because they're very thankful for that because it does, it gets backed up really bad in there if we don't shut that part down. Party enforcement, again, our goal is to treat it just like any other day of the year. We have the same expectations as our officers, even though it's July 4th. We have two dedicated teams, what we call the Lugo Teams, and that is their prime responsibility is to respond to these parties and issue the citations if need be. That includes a big part of the education, we've been handing out flyers, going to the rental properties, going to the landlords and the owners and property management companies as well and educating them again on these laws. They've been extremely responsive. If you recall, we have three methods or three methods of dealing with this that gives us some leverage. We can issue administrative citations for municipal codes like loud and unreasonable noise or amplified music, which is a $100 fine. We have the DAC system that is still in place. It is now, instead of a DAC card, it's a civil citation as well. The first fine is $250. A repeat offense is $500 and a third response is a $750 fine. And then above that would be our Lugo response. The Lugo response gives us a little more meat in there, a little more leverage. That starts at $500 for first response, goes to $1,000, $2,000, and $3,000. The other thing that it does is it allows us to cite everybody at that party. Where the DAC or administrator cite, we would throw the person responsible for the party. We would issue them a citation, those that are responsible. The Lugo allows us to actually cite everybody that is there at the party. So quite a bit of leverage. We should all, we would also post that house for 30 days with a Lugo sticker that they cannot be in violation of any other noise or party laws, or they will be cited again in ascending order of fines for going out there. So again, it made a big impact. Like I said, in 2011, we did 16. 2012, four. Last year, we actually only issued one Lugo. Our shifts this year, again, we'll be operating 12-hour shifts for our day watch and night watch patrols. They'll be responsible providing services citywide. They will be, they will all be doubled up. And then for the deployments to the Safety Enhancement Zone, we're going to have some staggered start times, starting at 10:00 a.m. and going up till 2:00 p.m. to get them out there. Again, this is full deployment for all our sworn officers. This is a mandatory workday. But in addition, some of the outside resources that we utilize, the Orange County Regional Mounted Enforcement Unit, we are going to have the horseback out there again for the third year in a row. Anaheim Police Department, UCI Police Department, the Irvine Police Department is providing us bicycle officers again, we did that last year. CHP Motors and some of their vehicles are going to be coming down and help us with traffic enforcement. And then our mobile booking team is manned by the Sheriff's Department, same as years past where we've done it the rear of the Old City Hall. The difference this year is we're moving that over to the police department. So we're actually going to run our mobile booking station out of the rear of the police department this year.
Police Department on Santa Barbara?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We have 11 transportation vans that'll actually be working for us. We've been given approval to use the lower level of Hoag Parking Lot, kind of to stage them as transportation taxis. They'll respond to the Safety Enhancement Zone, pick up their bodies, and the goal is to, without uncooperative or combative, we'll try to fill that van as best we can and then they'll make the trip down to the police station.
And so the Old City Hall site is being used just for the equestrian?
Yes, sir, for parking purposes only. And then what we're doing is food service and some of our other, like report writing and some of those things for the officers to be done up at City Yard this year, up at Industrial and Superior.
You mean I have to go all the way up there to get a sandwich on the Fourth of July?
We could bring you one, sir. This year also, for the first time, we'll be monitoring social media. You know, the goal is to, again, be preventive in our actions out there and if we can identify something or an issue that may be about to respond out there and move our resources prior to it happening is what the goal is with that. In addition, you know, every year, we do some training for crowd control, but this year, we really put a big emphasis on it. We spent the past six months, it's UASI-sponsored training countywide. There's countywide funds, so it didn't cost us anything to train our police officers. So we were able to get over 100 of our police officers trained in this concept of mobile field forces. And that culminated with the photos you see there. That's on June 2nd, we went up to the Orange County Fairgrounds. We had over 100 of our law enforcement officers up there along with the members of the mounted enforcement unit, and we had role players. You could see some of the smoke there. We were throwing smoke. We input noise and then the role players would throw things, tennis balls and stuff at them also, just for that stress inoculation part of the training. And it's really helped quite a bit and I could tell you, we're very prepared this year for anything that may occur. Hopefully, nothing does occur. That's our goal, to prevent it from occurring, but God forbid it does, we will be prepared. Community outreach, we've already been doing this the past few weeks, contacting all the business owners. We've been holding our community meetings and passing out, I think we might have had some of the flyers here today, giving an example of some of the flyers and the mailers that we've been sending out to the businesses and the residents there. We've also, one of the other things we also do is notify all the newspapers, including all the outside counties. What we always try to do is contact LA County, Riverside County, San Bernardino, San Diego Counties and try to get them to comply as well and put out some of their information to their residents because as we know, those 124 arrests we made last year, probably 85% to about 80, I think it was about 88% of them were non-residents of Newport Beach. The goal is to keep them in their neighborhoods and let them celebrate the Fourth of July there, rather than come here to cause problems and get arrested. We've been going out to the known party houses that have been identified and getting out there and talking with them again and educate them and letting them know what the rules are and what's going to happen and what the ramifications are going to be, specifically on the Fourth of July. Again, that includes reaching out to the owners of the property and the property rental and property management companies. And additionally, as you're all well aware, the short-term lodging permit, which allows us to do evictions on the spot. And in addition, we'll also have the building department provides a couple of their officers that come out and work with us that day and it gives us a little more leverage to, if people are up on the rooftops and stuff like that, doing something unsafe as part of that party, that gives us a little more leverage to get in there as well and terminate the This has been going out over to our website, our Facebook pages, as well as Twitter and Nixville. We've been working with the news media. I know the deputy chief was doing some interviews today with the local media. And then we put our signage out and I think we do a total of six signs. We do West Coast Highway, Superior, Newport Boulevard. We do Jamboree, the Coast Highway, and I think there might be Newport Coast that we do another. But we end up doing a total of six signs notifying them of the event and the do's and At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Sean from the Recreation Department.
Thank you. Mayor Hill and members of council, Sean Levin, Recreation Superintendent. So PD is in charge of the safety on the Fourth and we're in charge of the fun. So I'm going to talk a little bit about that. We've got the Fourth of July is for families on the peninsula with the bike parade at 9:00 a.m. and then the festival from 9:30 to 11:30. And a big part of this, it isn't just fun, it's about changing the culture on the peninsula. And I guess it was about five years ago now that Councilmember Hen came up with this idea to do this parade along with the community. And that's, and that's the next slide. It's really, it's thanking the community because an event like this to really change the culture, it doesn't happen without the community involved. So I wanted to recognize Craig Battley, Richard Bergstrom, Sharon Bowles, Mary Bryant, Diane Dixon, Cindy Kohler, Jim Miller, Lori Morris, and Jim Stapleton. Multiple meetings to organize this. This is really a community-based event. And so it's due to their efforts that this is happening. Also, another part of that. Also, another part of that is the, of the community are the sponsors. So we want to thank all of our sponsors who are making the event happen on that day as And as well as the PD was talking about, we serviced not only the peninsula that day, but another area of the city, which is up for the Mariners' Independence Parade, the 42nd Annual Parade in that neighborhood. And that's, the parade goes at 10:30 a.m. and goes, and then the festival goes from 11:00 to 2:00. And we partner with the Mariners Elementary School Foundation to do this event, so we'd like to thank them as well. It's a great partnership. There are sponsors up there as well that we want to thank, and so we're very thankful for the sponsors who make these events happen. And that concludes the presentation for, on behalf of PD and Recreation and Senior Services. If there's any questions at this time, we'd be happy to answer them.
All right, comments from the council? It's like you've done a great job. Councilman Hen, you look like you want to talk.
I did have one comment. Five years ago, I recall a meeting with Dave Kiff, and I asked him, well, what do you think? Do you think we can change the culture in West Newport? And he said, well, I think we can, and I'm game to try. And so I'd really like to thank Dave for his immediate and important support for all of this. We envisioned a five-year process, recognizing that the process is never done, but at least a five-year milestone, anyway. And we're coming up on that milestone. We've had a little bit of luck the last few years with the calendar, with the forthcoming during the week, and so I've been reluctant to declare victory on that milestone, at least. This year, with the Fourth on a Friday, it'll be the acid test. I'm very proud of our police department chief for, first, for your support, and secondly, for their enthusiastic pursuit of this because every year, they get a little better with these additional things that they've prepared to sharpen up even further on this, and mostly in ways that are preventive, not punitive. And so I think that's a big key here, to pair up a set of big sticks that we made even bigger along the way, that's the negative side of this, with the positive side, which is family-friendly and the support of the community and the citizens, which is critical. So, Dave, your support, chief of the police, and Evan, and David, all of that, as well as Parks and Rec, I just, the response has been just completely enthusiastic all the way, and it's made a heck of a difference, and I'll look forward to declaring victory this year. Thank you.
I would like to echo those comments. The dedication to preventative activity, the dedication to preparation for anything that might happen, and the community involvement in that process. I think this is a great example of the team working together that has made a, has made a great change. So I, too, congratulate staff at all levels, and especially our police force and our Recreation Department. So, good work. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I congratulate everyone for a good, a good presentation, good communication, and we would move to public comments.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on items listed on the agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to offer public comments at this point in time? Seeing none, we will adjourn to closed-door session if we are planning on having one. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Hill. The city council will adjourn to closed session to discuss agenda items four, A through C, including meeting with labor negotiators Dave Kiff and Terry Cassidy regarding labor negotiations with all represented employees, meeting with legal counsel to discuss one matter of anticipated litigation, and meeting with real property negotiator Dave Kiff to instruct him on the price in terms of payment related to the property at $14.99 in Minrovia. Thank you.
And thank you. With that, we will recess until 7:00 p.m. when we reconvene.